Yeah.
Well, when it comes to computers, I'm always there. They don't, they don't like me.
Yeah, what I'm having trouble with. Work managers.
Are you connected to the internet?
Buffalo actually was got here. No, that's not. County Friday, Brad.
Oh yeah, we're not on the rock. We're on the purchase.
I'm on Buffalo. But I can't find the court signers. Hi, how you doing? Thank you.
It's a computer operating. You know, around my office, that's what I'm going for. I can do anything with pencil and pen. If you put me on this stuff, I know I'm good, but outside of that. If it was up to me, I'd much rather go back to his paper. I love that. We were forced to go to paperless.
Were you gonna send me something? In the emails?
Yeah, I could send that email from just saying what I told you.
Okay, well, I just didn't know you said, here you go, like you're gonna send something.
Public comments.
Give me something that I can respond to them.
Okay.
Just give me some information.
I can do that.
So I can say, okay, here's the deal, the, you've gotta go through the. Time's gonna be over there because that was in the agreement with them already.
Yes.
I sent you the early email. I haven't seen your email this morning.
That happens from.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe I, maybe I, I'm sure I've seen it back seven thirty this morning.
Okay. But I'll hear that later.
Yeah, yeah, just something that I can say, okay, here's the deal.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Can't find your boner?
No.
Or boners?
Well, I thought we had to go to county Friday. That seems like a lot of trouble. You could just go to county Friday. Hey, how you doing?
Yeah. I just know every time I hit on a password, it would just sit there and circle, circle, then I go over there. Thank you, Scott. You good on that? Yeah, I'm all right.
Your ring. How about that?
Just talked to a friend of mine who did the game last night. Still hurting.
Yeah, so loud. I said it's loud as ever been. Good for them.
Everybody copy this?
Well, it's gonna be quiet. Let's go ahead and I'll start with the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for today, Father. We thank you for your grace and your mercy to us, Father. We thank you for this county and the opportunities that we have to serve citizens and we just pray that you would help this council, give them wisdom and guidance in the decisions that we make, Father. And Father, we know we, we are in a time of lots of conflict, Father, and just pray that we know that you are in control. And we ask all these things in your son's precious name. Amen. All right, American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, will never end, and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honoring Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to Texas. One state under God, one.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, I will call our meeting to order at nine oh one. And we have a forum, all commissioners and the county judges present. Item number two, general announcements. We have Ms. Curry.
Thank you, God. I want to make an introduction this morning. VanZack County has its very first civil assistant district attorney. She's here with us today. Her name is Shannon Barber. And Shannon will be housed here in the courthouse and she is available to all elected officials and department heads to help them with any legal issue that arises. That is her job as well as she will be answering. I know a lot of you will be thrilled about this. She will be answering all public information act requests for the county. So we're very happy to have Shannon with us.
Yes, we are. All right. There's more.
There's more. And it comes to us via Senate Bill twenty-two, the money, the grant money that my office received from the legislature. So she is not costing the county taxpayers anything at this point.
That's great.
All right, next up, we have Richard Brand with Line Marder and Associates.
Yes, Mr. Mr., before I get into that, let me tell you, I personally know this barber and we went to law school together and I could recommend that person. Feel that we're awesome. So, um, I'm Richard Brandon. We've all spent lots of time together. We're here just to do our annual delinquent tax collection report. You have two reports in front of you. We did have a full PowerPoint slide presentation. If you spend any time with me at all, you know I did not create that because it's digital and I don't do digital. So I'll, I'll show you real quick, couple of things. First of all, they'd like us to introduce our staff, but today's especially important. We've got several new people in our staff. You all know Hannah Caldwell, been working with VanZack County for five, six years now. For a long time. We also have Jackie Foss. She's been working with us for a total of seven hours. That sounds about right, fourteen hours, maybe? Uh, we have Melinda Etheridge. She is our office manager in the Kaufman office. Kaufman County Police, some of the school district, went over between VanZack and Kaufman County. In those situations, whoever collects for the school collects for both sides of the county line. So you'll probably see her in Courtney, who collects for Will's coin. You'll probably see them come before with me quite often. Of course, you also have all the people behind us, listening as you've met before. Our litigation manager, you've got Jim Lambeth, Wade Chin, Allison refuses to leave. I have many times I've taken her out of the county. She loves VanZack so much, she won't leave. All of us are here to get back and call again. You've got all of the force of Line Marder working for you. These are the ones who really do all the work right here. I'd love to take the credit for it, but they're the ones who do all the real work. So the good news, we've had stellar collections. We've talked every year and we've talked in person about my personal philosophy. I'm probably the only collection attorney you'll ever meet who doesn't want to file a lawsuit. As I've said time and time and time again, I don't want to sue anybody. I want to talk to people. I want to get them in front of me. We want to negotiate with what the law will allow us to negotiate a payment plan. Because the moment I have to file lawsuits, if it's five dollars or five million dollars, you're adding several thousand dollars on that person. I don't like to file lawsuits. I've, I've, that's my last resort. To start with, in that Idylla soft collections, over three years, we've sent out thirty-four thousand letters. That's not including statements that are statutory that goes out. If you are a delinquent property tax owner in VanZack County, you're getting somewhere between nine and twelve letters a year saying that you're delinquent. Most people put that straight in the file thirteen. But there's nobody in VanZack County who can look a judge in the face, look us in the face and say that they had no clue they were delinquent. I do that on purpose. Of that thirty-four thousand letters we sent, we've asked for a collective nineteen million dollars to be paid. The good news is it's working. You'll notice that our actual lawsuits over that same period are down. We only had to file a hundred and ninety-five lawsuits this time against three hundred and thirty-three accounts. Because the soft collections do work. Going and talking with business owners, going and talking with homeowners who call in, who respond to our letters and our calls. All of that has been very effective. One of the things I do have to brag about, and I know this number particularly, we have six hundred and sixty-seven open phone lines. That is constantly calling out and trying to find people that are delinquent. Letters go out, they can call in, we can call out. Six hundred and sixty-seven lines that are going out constantly to try to find people and talking. Of those lawsuits that we had to file, the hundred and ninety-five, we've asked for three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and five dollars. We also do tax warrants. I know y'all hear about that whenever we go out and finally have to knock on doors and go with the sheriff's department and seize property. We have to, we've only had to actually seize, or we've only actually had to file for tax warrants. But it never fails, whenever we go and knock on doors and we start talking to the business owners about delinquent taxes, they'll call the sheriff's department. Or they'll call the constable and say, somebody's out here scamming us, trying to make us pay money that's not real. Four of them went all the way to a warrant against eleven counts for thirty-seven thousand. One thing I'm always willing to do is I'm always willing to take a payments and settle, even after we file a lawsuit. If someone will come in and pay everything they owe, I'm done. We're not going to go any further. We're not going to add any more on this on them. They get to retain their property. That's ultimately my goal. Of the hundred and ninety-five petitions, we filed a hundred and twenty-one of them against two hundred and thirty-six accounts paid before we got to a judgment. So it's working. It's happening. Word's getting around. We did have to take a hundred and twenty-six judgments this year against two hundred and seven accounts. But a hundred and twenty-six judgments wound up being a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars that went all the way to the point of judgment. Even after judgment, if someone will come and make payments and work with us, I'm not going to sell property. I want to be able to leave property, especially old family estates in the hands of the owners. So of the hundred and twenty-six petitions that went to a judgment, ten of them were paid subsequent to a judgment. But before the sale, getting a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars paid before we had to take anybody to a foreclosure sale. Finally, what that means is there's two hundred and ninety-seven open petitions. Those are lawsuits that are somewhere in the process of going to a judgment. The one thing I will say, I've mentioned a lot about how much I don't want about lawsuits. My one rule is the moment we file a lawsuit, unless there's full payment, we're going all the way to judgment. We don't stop. We don't negotiate. The only thing that'll stop us is a legal reason such as a bankruptcy. Otherwise, we're going to go to a judgment. I do want to say finally, soft collections, excuse me, soft collections don't work unless there's hard collections behind it. If someone refuses to speak with us, if someone refuses to pay, or someone just won't, and you see all the effort we put into it. Ultimately, I'm not afraid to take something to a, to a tax foreclosure sale. You see us out here four times a year on the courthouse steps. Normally, that's when everybody's got a little reckless crowd out here. We have sold a hundred and twenty-seven tracts of land bringing to the county two hundred and forty, or two billion, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from selling that property. I don't like doing it, but I will. As you look here, you can see some of the techniques that we have for getting word out about the property that's for sale. I would like to tell you all that we do have lgs.com. Any piece of property that is going to be offered for sale, whether it's first time or resale, a struck off, whatever it is, it's going to be on that website. We are the leaders in online sales. If the county ever wishes to, I have to put this play because Jim Lambeth makes me too. If the county ever wishes to, we can lose a total of online sales where we don't crowd your front steps anymore. That's a conversation whenever commissioners or the judge are ready to talk about it. I'd be happy to have it. The last thing I want to point to is your top twenty-five accounts. I'm not going to say any names because we are in a public hearing. This is all public information. But these are your top twenty-five accounts. The numbers go from the highest amount down. Number one owes twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. They filed bankruptcy this year. You'll see there's two bankruptcy, our suit numbers there. We were, we defend the county and all the entities in VanZack and bankruptcies. We'll be right there with the creditors and as you know, we have a super priority. Which we thought the only attorney you'll ever meet who gets to tell the IRS what to do. They take after the county. They take after property taxes. We actually got them kicked out of bankruptcy that they filed in twenty-twenty-one and they turn around and call again in twenty-twenty-three. I expect will probably resolve this, your top account, next year, early next year. Unless the bankruptcy judge just knows something that I'm not affected with. Number two. Of course, and this is just for the county's portion. This isn't all the instances. Number two, seventeen thousand, hundred and eighty-four dollars was paid. And then from there, just quickly, you'll see out of your top twenty-five, you have a handful that have the word deferral decided. Whenever you'd like, so y'all know my position on how bad of an idea defer in taxes for two years' worth and how it damages states. But what that means is that certain people over sixty-five are able file a piece of paper with the Central Prisons District, which stops any collections and allows that property taxes to just continue to build until they either move or pass. Well, there's a handful of them on here that by law, I'm not even allowed to send them a letter. I can't talk to them. I can't do anything. That's a, that's an act of defense that they put up. But you'll notice every one of the accounts are either paid under deferral or under sued. Your top twenty-five accounts, which is the bulk of your taxes due are either collected or will be collected very soon. If you look at the last page, you'll see that we collected a hundred and one percent of your tax levy for the previous tax year for the twenty-twenty-two taxes. We collected a hundred and one percent of what your law letter, what you budgeted to have. And that's been the same for the last several years. What I mentioned to you on the other page, if you look at that graph, shows you what's there that's open for us to grab. As we, as I mentioned, there's three hundred, almost three hundred suits out there that we've already worked on. You'll see there's only thirty-eight percent of your total total levy, your total delinquent accounts out there that I can even go after. That means that sixty-two percent of it has either been totally collected for this year or is under some sort of a stop, not allowing me to go forward on it. Y'all are actually a county that I used to brag at whenever I tried to pick up other counties and how well it works here. You've got a great system here. You've got a great collector at the CAD who works very diligently to make sure that your, your delinquent taxes aren't taken care of. And to be honest with you, we're a team that works. Line Marder, VanZack, works really well together. It has for several years. With that, I promise, I'll, I'll probably be the most boring thing y'all listen to today. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Explain how you can collect a hundred and one percent.
So your total tax levy, remember I'm a lawyer, so I'm terrible at math, so I use easy numbers. Say your total tax levy is a thousand dollars, which it's, it's not because it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars. But say your total tax levy is a thousand dollars. That is what you have budgeted for the twenty-twenty-two year is a thousand dollars. When I collect, I'm collecting the twenty-twenty-two years, I'm also collecting whatever other years that that person didn't pay. What that means going forward is that gets counted into the collection levy for this, for this year. The goal is to be ninety-seven and higher because if we're under ninety-seven, your schools are the ones who are getting punished. If your total levy collection isn't ninety-seven and higher, your schools lose state funding because of it. We monitor this very closely. We watch it very much to make sure that each of our schools are receiving every dollar that they possibly can. We don't want to lose anything, especially on our behalf. And that's, you've heard me talk about T E A numbers, the Taxation Agency Agency numbers. That is a number that's verified by third party. I can't create it. The competitors can't create it. The school themselves can't create it. They have to have an outside auditor come in, send it down to the agency, they verify it. Every one of VanZack's schools, and I'm happy to say that I'm over every one of the schools, are over a hundred percent and the baseline is ninety-seven. So we beat it and exceed it every year. Now, we'll brag a little.
On the, on the deferred cases, if the owner, whoever passes, but there's a wheel and it goes to the person, another person, that other person has to pick up the delinquent tax.
All right, hold on. I'm gonna get on my soapbox real quick because I actually think this is a terrible, terrible idea. What it does is a person who is over sixty-five, who's in need, this isn't the idea of everything worked the way it was supposed to. A person over sixty-five can petition the county, the Central Prisons District to not have their, to not be forced to pay taxes anymore. The problem with that is we see people who live to be eighty-five, ninety-five, a hundred years old. That's twenty-five, almost thirty years of taxes that get unpaid. The law says that when they move or they die, they have a hundred and eighty days to pay it. Uh, the law says that when they move or they die, they have a hundred and eighty days to pay it. A A R P, I'm gonna go ahead and throw them under the bus, sorry, A R P is the one who pushed this through. Uh. Your taxes did grow at five percent. Now it's four point five, at the time it grew at five percent. A A R P just happened to offer a financial instrument that grew at five and a half percent. And the idea was you put your taxes in there and you grow one percent every year, and then. At the time of your passing, your kids get that money, go pay the, the uh account. And they gain one percent every year growth. That's great if it works, the problem is most of the time it doesn't. And a five thousand dollar tax bill. At the time of people's deaths are well over a hundred thousand dollars, hundred fifty, two hundred thousand. And uh it will completely destroy any estate that you're planning on leaving to your kids. I don't give much blanket legal advice, the one that I will give is if someone is considering a referral. Talk to your kids, make payments when you can, don't leave that burden on them. Because six months after time of death is a very, very short, as the county clerk can agree with me on probate, six months. Most people don't even file their, their will and start probating for it in six months. I'll be off my soapbox.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Richard, you have, you have done a great job, uh. In collecting for, for this county. And I think, I think Sandy would agree to that, really, right? Okay.
I appreciate any further need, I'll just pop her for now, go get that and bring it back.
All right, appreciate that. Any more public comments, or uh not public comments, general announcements? Now, now we'll move on to public comments, we have two people signed up. And the first is going to be Melissa Davis, going to talk about the uh radio purchase.
Judge, commissioners, I have a letter from the mayor asking to be included in with the grant purchase of the radios. When you finally decide, decide on purchasing them. The city event and the fire department and the police department would greatly appreciate that. And then, once we get to the matter of the service agreement. We would love to be able to have a chat with everyone and see what we can do on that part. Cuz my understanding is that doesn't start until after year three. So that gives us ample amount of time to have conversations for that purpose.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ronnie Jones. Ronnie Jones is going to speak on items three, which is public comments. Items four, which is consent agenda. And item nine, which is uh precinct or countywide speed limit noted trucks. You may proceed, Susan, are you, you're timekeeper?
Yes.
Okay, very good, you may proceed, Ronnie. Five, five minutes?
Three items to talk about, the first one. Is number three, I spoke on last. I didn't get a response to that until today, which means nothing is going to change. We're still gonna talk about stuff we don't know what we're talking about. To y'all, but you know about it, so therefore, you must have talked about it in private session. Amongst yourself and agreed to it. And I think that's illegal. Number four. Is we can only talk about that item, if the commissioner or somebody else. Or the judge says you can talk about it. So I've got permission to talk about it. Again, you're stopping the people from interacting with the court. It's their tax money that keeps you in that court. So I think we need to have a voice to what you're doing. And right now, it appears you're trying to keep us from knowing what you're doing. And number nine is another example of that. Precinct or county speed limits. Number one, you don't have enough officers now in the sheriff's department to enforce that, even if you pass it. But apparently, you won't pass it. Because one or two people in the county don't like living in the country, but they moved here. Think I'm talking over somebody's ear. But anyway. We don't need more law enforcement. In the county beyond what we have. We don't have enough. In the sheriff's department, that's another issue. But not a separate entity for the precinct or the county. We have enough government. We don't need more. That's all I have to say. Thank you, thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you very much, item number four, consent agenda. The consent agenda are items of routine by the commissioner's court and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item. To be removed, the consent agenda considered separately. So, uh. Is there any item in the consent agenda from A through G? That needs to be, that any commissioner has a question on, would like to pull?
I've got a question on the monthly reports.
Okay. So. Uh, so we will pull item number F out, monthly reports. Do you wanna discuss it right now?
Exactly.
Okay.
Uh, my question is on, on this, uh, we're, we're falling behind on some, from these reports. I know we always run a little behind, because you can't turn a report till after the month over where. But we're short several reports in June and July. But then we'll come back to August, we've, we've got nearly all of our reports with exception of one. So, is anybody? How are we pleased to let our elected officials and supervisors know that we're not getting your reports to?
So the question is, who is responsible for monitoring the reports?
Court's responsible for saying that they get turned in, that's why it comes here, so.
Okay.
But, but uh. We normally haven't had this problem, so my question is. Who from the court notifies the people that didn't turn in their June and July reports, that those reports are due?
We nor- we normally notify those people in open court, like Tim did when he was here, he's, he called them out. In open court, that they hadn't turned their report in, so.
Well, I, 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 I just want people to know, I don't mind saying, I don't mind saying. In June, in June of this year, we didn't receive a port from Constable Number Two. We didn't receive a port from J P Number Two. We didn't receive a port from Van Zandt County Library. And we didn't see a report from I D Law, that was in June. And then in July, we didn't receive a port from, from Constable Four. And we didn't see a report from, from J P Four. And in August, we didn't receive a board from E M X. I won't mention September, cuz now September's just now coming in. There's a lot of them that are not here for September, so I just wanted to bring that out, that, that we shouldn't, these. These reports are, are due, uh, and the, the elected officials are the reports, to turn in those reports.
All right, would you like for me to contact these officials?
Uh, that, that, that's up to the court.
Okay, well, I'll be glad to contact these in the future. Again, can I get this a little bit quicker than the day of meeting?
I'll be glad to make that motion.
The Friday, okay, we don't, I don't know that it needs to be motion, I'll just volunteer to do it. So, all right, anything else on the?
Oh, sure.
All right, so, we have now discussed that separately, uh, is there a motion to approve items? The consent agenda items, including item F that we just discussed?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second, please.
All right. Uh, all those, and then further discussion, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss and approve the financial statement for Emergency Services District. Number three for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. As a matter of record and to be entered into the commissioner's court minutes. So. The uh. Emergency Services District uh provide the financial, you know, audited financials to the, to the commissioner's court. Each year, and this is uh Emergency Service District Three's financial report. So is there a motion to approve uh the acceptance of these financial reports?
Go move.
So, all right, motion has been made, and second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number six. Uh, discuss and consider approval of a part-time administrative position for the road and bridge fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four budget should have reflected a twenty-four hour per week position. As presented during budget workshops. So, Sandy, uh.
Morning, Judge. Every year, we start our new budget year on October the first, and. I hold my breath to make sure we got everything in that budget, and uh. So this year, uh Commissioner Melton came to my office and said that. They had requested during their budget workshop to have a twenty-four hour a week part-time employee. And I went back and tried to find the um recorded. Workshop schedule, and it wasn't, there's no record of that. Time that we have that session. But I went back and looked at my manual notes and had made an allocation twenty-four hour part-time. So, once we addressed the part-time salaries, I went through and just. The court agreed to eight percent increase on part-time employees. So I took the eight percent that you had last year on your part-time employee and just put eight percent and moved on. My mistake, I'm sorry, I apologize before. Uh, but, so, in order to correct this, we will have to, um. You four commissioners pay for, out of your budget, to do a transfer to allow for a secretary in your office and admin assistant. So, we will have to go back and do a budget amendment. Now, I put the budget amendment in here, and I would like for you to prove it at the same time. I actually put two. Uh. Mr. Melton said that it would be a twenty-four hour per week at fourteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. So I had to increase that budget by ninety-eight hundred dollars. And my question is. How many of you want to participate in funding this part-time? I did an amendment for all four of you, and then I was told that Commissioner Brad. Had administrative assistant in his barn, and he did not want to be a part of it, so. Um. And that was just someone coming in the office, so, I need to, just to give you a pair. But it will cost each of you two thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. And I just took it to come out of your contingency lines. If you would rather come out of your own bridge line, you can pay on me, it doesn't matter.
One of the other options, and it would be uh three thousand, not eighty-nine dollars. A piece, and that's because Commissioner uh Brad has his own.
Yes.
So, so it'd be up to us, the rest of the commissioners, the three of us, to, to. Take this money out of our uh budget.
And once we do this adjustment, uh, I wanna, want you to understand it's not gonna increase our budget in any way, so we won't be violating that code. Because you're going to increase your transfer to that department for that amount. So it's a to and from, and there will be no increase in the budget, it'll be an offset.
I'm, I'm for it, I'm my end.
I'm for it, I'm my end.
I'm for it, but I mean, this is, I don't know how it's gonna work when, when we don't share the call, I, I mean. Some, someone from public calls in and, and our, our, our help answers the phone, said, can I talk to Mr. Clad, they're gonna say, no, hang up.
I'm still sharing Keegan's, with Spencer Keegan. But when it comes to the part-time, the reason we put this part-time person on was to help take it off Keegan while they're part-time in my barn. So I think he can transfer the phone line to Grand Slam without any trouble. And like I said, I'm still paying twenty-five percent of Keegan's.
And he is paying a portion of that part-time salary. Because I originally had just, I originally had ten thousand dollars. And we're having to update it for part-time, so he is paying a portion of the team.
Well, yeah, we're all paying a portion of the Keegan's. Twenty-five percent.
But he was also paying a portion of the part-time money that was there, that was in the original budget of ten thousand.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm for it.
I'd like to mark my contingency, not the road and bridge level.
Okay, that's, that's the, what she's proposed contingency. So if uh, is there a motion? To split the increase between the three commissioners that have agreed to do it?
No motion.
All right, is there, uh, again, the motion is to, uh, the increase in a part-time administrative assistant. That to be uh, uh, twenty-four hour a week. And that will make it a thirty, I can't get my mouse to work.
Three thousand.
Three thousand eighty-nine per uh commissioner, for the three precincts. Uh, so Commissioner Martin has uh made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. All right, motion passes. Uh, item number seven. Uh, discuss and consider the adoption of Van Zandt County Route Forty-two thirteen as a one-way road. From two thirty P M to three forty-five P M during the Martin Smill I S D school year. And I need to state, we need to have a, open it up for public hearing. But I will let Commissioner uh Martin go ahead and this, and explain what, what the situation is.
Okay, uh, Martin's Mill, they changed their pickup lines this year. And I don't know if you've been out there, but the way it was, it was on the highway, I'm not sure what the highway number is. It was causing a lot of problems on the, on the farm market road. With the backup, so they've changed it to go on forty-two thirteen to, to help speed up the traffic on the highways. And, and not cause that much of a traffic jam. The forty-two thirteen is a narrow road, and during these hours, if they can go from. South to north as the one-way road, uh, it'd be a fluid pickup line, and then. As it states right now. With the road being narrow, it's a two-way road, the cars would be parking in the ditches. And in the summertime, when it's hot, if those cars are running, it could cause a fire. And in the wintertime, when it's wet, they're gonna run up the ditches. So I propose just to make it a one-way road where the cars are staying in the road just from two thirty to three forty-five. During the Martinville School Year, I talked to the transportation uh manager there, and uh he was all for it. And I went and looked at Van, um, the elementary school there, they had some signs, they do the same thing, I think it's off Pecan Street there. It's just, what does that to put up sign, you know, it's a one-way road from two thirty to three forty-five during Martinville School Hours. And uh, I'd like to propose making that a one-way road from the, ju- just for pickup, not for drop-off.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to uh open a public hearing to discuss this, cuz this notice was posted in the paper. That we would be having a public hearing concerning this very uh item. So at uh nine thirty-eight, I'm going to go into a. So at nine thirty-eight, I'm going to go into a uh. Open public hearing considering Martin's Mill or the uh changing of this Van Zandt County Road Forty-two thirteen. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? On this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing at nine thirty-eight or nine thirty-nine. Uh, and we'll go back into a regular session.
Oh, I motioned to change it to.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Barton. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is made. Second, any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider disposing of brush and dirt at precinct four county barn.
This is mine also, uh. We're starting to clean up the ditches and with all the tornadoes and. How wings and all that, we've got a lot of brushing the ditches and there's a lot of big uh. Big stuffs, not not just little little branches, but big stuff. And we have nowhere to put it. Uh, we have put it at the barn in the past and we would burn it there, but there's houses. Around the barn and once it gets done burning and smoldering, they they were complaining about it and I don't I don't blame them. Uh, so I'm, I've suggested I do have a brush haul. That I said that we could use, we could put the brush on there, uh. Not permanently, just until I get mine burned, but they, we could put the big. The big brush on my brush haul at my place. And that's what I was requesting to do to make sure it's all right.
That's your motion?
Yeah, I motioned though. I motioned.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, motion is made. Second, any further discussion? What, where is your brush pile located?
Uh, across the roof from my house.
Okay, what just what what county road is that?
Forty-five oh five.
Okay, forty-five oh five. All right, any further discussions? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider precinct and county-wide speed limit and no through trucks.
This is the. I I place this on the agenda and contrary to what you say, Ronnie, we hadn't talked about this. Uh. We we do talk about it every time, sometimes the people in Van Zandt County petition. This court to lower the speed limit, uh, we come in here and we do it a row at a time. I've said for uh nearly seven years now, I don't know why we don't do this precinct wide. There's already a speed limit on every road in Van Zandt County. We're not, we're not placing a, we're placing a different one on it, hopefully. Uh, I'm going to propose and will that have a public hearing on it? And I don't believe it's been put in the paper yet. Uh. I'm gonna propose that at least in precinct three. Every road in precinct three, the speed limit will be thirty-five miles an hour. Instead of some of them forty-five, some some of them are are fifty. If they're not posted, I think they're sixty or sixty-five.
Sixty.
Sixty. If a road doesn't have a speed limit sign on it, it's automatically sixty miles an hour. So uh. That's uh, that's my deal. Same way on the no through trucks. We have, we have rock trucks that that uh and delivery trucks uh. Dollar General is one of the worst ones. They cut from one state road over to another state road going down our county roads. And tearing our roads up. And when we catch them doing it, we we I come to this court and I ask to make this road a no through truck road. No, every county road in Van Zandt County ought to be no through trucks. If you're cutting from one state road over to another state road. Stay off of a road. If you've got business on there, if you've got delivery, go make it delivery. Yes, sir. We don't want to stop that at all. But if you're cutting through the same time down our roads, stay off of them. You can go around the state of them. So that's my proposal. I'm gonna make a motion and we said, uh, that'd be up to him, Ronnie. I don't uh.
I I'd like to make precinct four in that too.
Uh, but are you gonna change the speed limit that's out there now, whatever it is, forty-five?
Yeah, sure.
So you're just going, no matter what speed limit is now, you're gonna change everything to forty-five?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I think we should. I think you should say that uh. The speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour unless otherwise posted.
That's fine.
Because there are some roads that.
Now, if you don't post it, it's a state law. It's still be sixty.
Right.
You you it it is going to force. Us into posting every road, because if you don't post it, it's gonna be, it's gonna remain city. You can't, we can't trouble uh override a state law.
Yes, is this a precaution?
No, it's not, Ronnie. Sorry. This is between the commissioners.
Uh. So uh, are you gonna dislike uh? When are you gonna have a public hearing?
I think we need to contact uh Bob Bass. Uh, I've got a notice here on on one of my listeners is. And he talks about it. County may lower speed limit from de facto sixty miles an hour to no less than thirty miles an hour without conducting a traffic. Study can be done on specific road or multiple roads, but there must be a newspaper notice. Uh, published thirty days prior and a public hearing on the topic before the limit is legal. Uh, and the signs must be erected in order to consummate the lowering of the speed limit. So uh. We we probably need to get with him to find out the exact manner in which we need to do this and then come before and then publish a uh. An that most notice in the paper. To to uh. Uh, announce a public hearing and then have a public hearing. But it does, from what I'm understanding is you're talking about if we lower. Lower every road to thirty-five, then you require a speed limit sign of thirty-five be put up on every road.
Correct.
Okay.
So, uh, did you just want to take it for now?
No, I'm 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 making a motion that we uh set a date uh. Uh, sixty days from now uh to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then.
All right, so motion has been made. And second, it should pursue setting the county uh, the fact the county's speed limit is thirty-five.
Two seconds.
Uh, Chad, uh, La Prad, uh. Second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number uh sixty days. Let me put that down. Sixty days.
That'll give us plenty of time, Judge.
Okay. Right, and to give the public, oh, that's right. All right, uh, item number ten, discuss, consider transferring reclaimer inventory number one, seven, seven, three from precinct four to precinct three.
Yes, sir. I place this on here. Uh, Commissioner Barton, uh. When he came in, he had some equipment he didn't use and he was going to, and he sold some stuff and he had this piece of equipment. And. Notably, he came and and let the rest of us know that I've got this piece of equipment. If it can't be utilized in the county, I'm gonna put it up for auction. We, he does not reclaim any roads. He overlays roads. Because he has the better road roads over there than I do in precinct three. Precinct three has to reclaim some roads because we don't have the finances to overlay all the roads that we have. So they don't use a utilize a reclamer as much as we do. So he offered. To transfer that to me and uh, but I'm bringing it to the court to get permission.
Make it official.
To make that official. So I'll make a motion that the court allows this uh reclamer to be transferred from precinct four to precinct three.
Second.
All right, motion made. Second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider transferring international mixer from precinct three to precinct one.
Yes, sir. I place this on here. This is the same fine, a little different deal. Precinct one. Is a very, it's a different precinct from uh uh ha- has different uh. Resources from three. Precinct one has lots of good sand that that makes very good oil sand. Over in precinct two, there is no sand that that's adequate for oils for mixing oil with it and and making oil sand. We weren't mainly a clay-based soil in precinct three. So there's an old mixer there that. When the county makes oil sand, they put out a wind roll of of uh sand. And then they come on top of that wind roll of sand and place oil on it and then they run a mixer on top of it, mix oil and sand and create oil sand. I have no, I have no use for it. It's been there seven years and we've never used it. Mr. La Pratt, he he might, he has a sand pit that he pays lease on. They create and make oil sand over there. So I was gonna put this thing in auction, but I asked him first. I said, do you have a use for this mixer? And he said, I could use it if nothing else for parts, because he's got one just like it. So I'm making this motion that we transfer this piece of equipment, this international mixer from precinct three to precinct one.
Second.
All right, motion made. Second, is there any additional discussion? I I admire or uh. Thank y'all for making best use of what we already own and putting it back to use or using it for parts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider purchasing subscriber units or radios for the L-three Harris contract.
No.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What?
Southern software.
Oh, okay. Uh, number third, uh, okay, I have a different agenda apparently. So discuss, consider Southern Software's annual software support agreement for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, this is uh, they provide, they graciously provided the the upgrade or the software. Contract and pricing back in April. Uh, and it goes into effect on November first. And so uh. Uh, it is submitted there for your review and uh I would uh entertain a motion to accept it. As.
I'll second. Or I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made. Do you accept? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made. Second, any discussion?
Well. In this area, I'd like to point out, we did kind of get the data conversion completed. And we've made our last payment to Justice Solutions to maintain their system, so we we've got the system fully functional.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number, the next one, it's discussed, consider purchasing the subscriber unit radios. For the L-three Harris contract.
Gentlemen, y'all have asked about this a few meetings back. So we got the agenda. We had a box from the police and fire departments. We have a workshop here, Steve, I've got to confer from them. Given a lot of information that was covered here for the. It might be proven table at this time. What's the wish to talk?
That's your motion.
I asked it, what y'all want to do? Y'all want to table it? We don't proceed on with that.
I would like to table it and. And communicate more the the entities that we have to communicate with. I'll come back to it.
I I would like to make a comment before we vote on table. Uh. We. We, it it's in, it's in, it's in the contract. Harris bid on these radio. And if if we don't make a change to this contract on how many radios we're gonna buy, which we we. We had this bid, so we know how much it is, but we never agreed, Van Zandt County, the. Commissioners Court has never agreed. On how many radios that we were gonna buy for the county or or any other entity within the county. But if we don't make a motion, if we don't settle this, Paris is fixing the orders of all these radios. And we're gonna be stuck with it, whether you want them or not. I, my opinion is we need to at least. Order the radios that Van Zandt County is wanting me. To you, to take care of Van Zandt County. I'm still at a loss. Total loss on this radio system that we're gonna go to entities. Other than Van Zandt County and ask them to pay for maintenance. On a radio system that they don't own. But then we're gonna take, then we're a whole another entity and we're gonna go buy radios for somebody else. This thing would be a whole lot simpler on everybody. If we pay for our own stuff and they pay for their own stuff. The complications out here is we is we're we're clashing. Is we're asking somebody else to pay for our stuff and somebody else is asking them to pay for their stuff. It absolutely does not make sense to me. While we don't take care of our business, let the other entities take care of their business. Uh, so that's, and so, but I'm afraid. If we do not act on this and come up with how many radios we're gonna buy, this, the clock's ticking on us. And we have, and we haven't even decided if we're gonna put up towers or not. You you both stop all these radio purchases and say right now and tell Harris, at least tell Harris, everything right now is on hold. Until we decide we're gonna put up towers or not. No need to have them, having a million dollar worth of radios and we don't have the towers to turn them on. So we're getting. Way, way, way ahead of ourselves and I apologize because. It's our fault. Everybody sitting or at least. Three people sitting behind this bench that we have put it off so long. Because we keep not, we don't want to address it. We don't want to address it. Guys, we've got to address this.
Chad Stanley had some time. And if we use that, utilize that time to go talk to the cities, the schools, the the E S Ds. And communicate with them about what's going on and we get them a number like we talked yesterday. And discuss it. Then I think we can move forward a little bit easier, but we don't, we don't even have a number. For the service service. What do we, I mean, we don't need, we don't need to buy radios yet if they're not on board with getting on the system.
Then let's make a decision and tell Harris, do not order any radios.
I think that's just what we're tabling for, Ricky.
But you gotta, you gotta notify Harris. I I agree with you. But you've got to notify Harris or they're, or they're, you're gonna reach a deadline. And Harris is gonna say, you never told us anything about not ordering these radios and we're, and they're on the way.
How much time you got, Chad? Or they give us time?
We still, they'll they'll start placing these orders in spring. We still got certain lines. We still got several lines. We'll get them.
I believe we can have enough. We can, we can have a decision made before the end of the year.
I do too. We just had, I think that's communicate with everyone and get and everybody on the same page. Which.
Then then at least set it on the agenda to get that and get get that, at least have somebody from Harris here. Next Commissioner to court and say, guys, here's our deadline. You don't tell me this, I'm war ordering radio. Chad Sam's friend. With no offense against Chad and all respect, what if he's wrong? What what if it's two weeks from now?
I I can, I can have somebody here. I I'm gonna come all seven. Then we can get your answer started. We can have somebody here in two weeks. That's not a problem.
I I don't know that we actually need someone here. If we could just get them to say and write it.
We got someone here today.
A deadline is or. Uh, this is very. With uh, Trot, Trout.
Trot.
Trot Communications who has been involved in uh.
My name.
Our contract with Harris and the radio system and the radios.
So the way that the contract is written is uh. Once we got to the DDR, which is Detail Design Review. They start ordering the network equipment. And the network equipment is the equipment that it takes longer to manufacture. And the radios could take a long time to manufacture too, depending on. Yes, finally, but. Uh, when the DDR is signed off on. Then the network equipment that goes at the tower sites and some of the equipment that goes over dispatch and things like that are started to. Uh, being manufactured. And in December, there will be a staging of that equipment in the uh. At their warehouse or at their factory, they call it, in Lynchburg, Virginia. And they'll set up all the equipment and they'll test it and we'll be there to witness, make sure it's all working right before it's shipped here and put into the warehouse that you guys are. Uh, looking to secure. Uh, as far as the radios go though, the radios for not being in being uh have not been ordered. And will not be ordered until the county says, these are the exact radios that we want to order. And this is the quantities and then those are ordered. And those typically, because y'all are getting mostly radios that only. They won't work on your existing system now that y'all will be moving off of. They work mostly um. Ninety-seven percent of them work only on the new system and we're talking about the frequencies here. Uh, it will be closer to the time that the system is cut over when those are actually ordered so that they're not sitting here for a long period of time. So Chad's right, is it would be springtime probably. It might even be a little bit after springtime depending on how implementation's going with the building of the towers and things like that. Um, but definitely you guys tell Harris we are ready to wear our radios and then that's when they're, they are not, they have not been ordered. Um, and they, uh, you know, y'all have those decisions to make and you tell them and then they work. And the way that that's set up in purpose is when you receive the radios and pay for them. Uh, there are a whole, uh, handful of milestone payments with the project. But the radios are kind of their own separate payment over here to the side. So if you decide you wanna order them, I mean, if you wanted to, you could order next week. But you can also wait considerably longer into next year to make that work. Once you've made your decisions on, you know, counts and all that.
Uh, and the, the current timing is end of this, or end of twenty twenty-four, when, uh, calendar year, when the system will be turned on.
That is, that is the plan, kind of, Q four next year.
Okay.
Uh, just to give you a, an example of your neighbor, uh, Hunt County ordered their radios about six weeks ago. They're, they're doing a very, exactly the same system y'all are. P twenty-five system with that three hairs. The reason they ordered theirs early and their, their order is about the exact same time as y'all's next year. The reason they ordered theirs early is they ordered a, uh, a more expensive radio that's got two frequency bands. So they can install their radios and start using them now on their existing system. And they also have the frequency band in for their new system. But those radios are more expensive. You know, because they have more capabilities. And that's why they were theirs. Uh, they took, except for about nine, only ninety radios. It's all for the show. And that was last year. So your decision on ordering radios is in y'all's court. Um, and that can go into the next year easy. Um, and, um, counts and all that. So that, that, they are not manufacturing those and those have not been ordered for you. But that, you, you get to pull this straight.
What if we wanted to order a different kind of radio?
You could do that too. There would be a change order, of course, because, um, let's say, for instance, you took a cheap, let's say you took that one frequency band radio and you wanted to go to the dual band radio so that you could use it on your system now and on the new system in the background. Um, if that costs five hundred dollars more radio, then you could do that. And you could, uh, you know, the numbers would have to be looked at. There's some things in the contract that I think are gonna, uh, you won't need. There's some, there's some contingency funds in the contract for BDA's and some of the buildings that maybe you don't need because of coverage. And so there might be some funds available, um, as, uh, Mr. Melvin said, that if you wanted to go to a, a higher-end radio, there might be some additional funds available to cover that if I increase the, the contract total amount that's, that's already been, you know, sound there.
In the, in, in the contract itself, that we have to use various product. We can't go outside and use another product.
So it, it, so the, the beauty of a P twenty-five radio system is that any radio that is, uh, uh, P twenty-five can be used on your radio system going forward. If there's an entity out there that has, um, some of the other brand radios.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Tim, Tim Wood is one.
Tim Wood is one, Motorola is one, Tate might be one. There's quite a few of them out there that can still be used on the system. The only, the only issue is that there's some proprietary features that may not be consistent across the county. The dispatch may not be able to get, you know, GPS data on all those radios like they would on Harris right now. So that's just an example. But as far as being able to push and talk and communicate with, with each other, that, that would work. So, um, Harris's pricing is very competitive. Y'all locked in the pricing on these radios when we signed the contract last year. And, and I do know that the, their prices have gone up as, as everything has, you know, with inflation. So, uh, those prices are locked in. You can add to those counts. You can change the model if you want. Go up to a higher model, uh, if, if you wanted to. Um, so yes, the exact counts of radios and the models that are in the contract today can be altered when you place your order next year. And they are not in production now.
Thanks. So I think it's, apparently we got some more re, work to do while we approve. So is there, is there a motion to table this item?
A motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, alls in favor of tabling, item number thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, we are concluding our regular meeting now and going into a closed executive session in compliance with section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two-five of the Texas Government Code. Conduct a closed meeting to deliberate business and financial issues relating to a contract being negotiated. So we will, uh, it is ten oh.